...number outside. We give you the end of the numbers. If for some reason you didn't get a number, don't worry about it. We will not leave without letting people speak. First up is number one. And I would ask everyone if they could be mindful of their time. We are scheduled to leave at eight o'clock, but please save your pieces as long as you take them.
Do we have to be expedite like making two or three numbers like we have last year's?
Sure. If number two, three, four, and five want to line up behind Courtney, then we'll be fine. Thank you. Now sir, please go ahead.
I want to thank Richard Davey. Because I made a request to them from Springfield. Asking him for meetings in Everett, Chelsea, Prehier, Orleans. And he had the decision to bring the meeting here. He already knows which is our campaigning, that is the extension of the blue line to Lin. The other request, which I want to insist on, is to place bathrooms in the stations. Every day we see more people urinating in the stations, in the halls. And I also have already requested to have a car for the bicycles. In Lin, there's a group, a group of people who are forming a movement in defense of transportation. I thank, I thank very much for your particular call. God bless. Thank you, sir.
Number, is there a number two? Number three? Number four? Oh, number three. Inside the nation.
Good evening. My name is Denise Jackson. I am a member of Mass Senior Action as well as the T Riders Union and the Access Advisory Committee to the T. I live right here in Lin. And my understanding is that we're actually going through this process all over again for an increase for ride services. Since the last increase, I can, excuse me, only I want a fixed income, so I can only place fifty dollars per month in my ride account, which only allows me five round trips per month. So I have to use them judiciously and very carefully. So the question is about prioritizing which trip is more important. Obviously, going grocery shopping isn't very important, should be, but it isn't. Most people seem unconcerned about this increase. The major reason is that they have their own cars, so they need the ride service. Or they have someone who can drive them everywhere they need to go. That would not apply to me because I am legally blind and I cannot, beyond my income, I cannot afford to maintain an automobile, so therefore it is not feasible for me to drive. Unfortunately, this also makes it, because of my level of disability, this also makes it difficult for me to access this, this route. But we have been around, around through this over the past several months. I'm finding it incredibly difficult to believe that we are going through this again. And once again, there is another proposal on the table for yet another fare increase. As a member of Mass Senior Action, we are requesting a moratorium on any further fare increases. There must be some other way of doing this other than doing it on the backs of those of us that can least afford it. I have gone through this over and over again, and it does not seem like we're being listened to. It seems like we're being ignored. So once again, I'm asking, I'm requesting a moratorium on any further fare increases. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a matter of housekeeping. Somehow, we've neglected to give anybody the fours. So as you see, here we skipping number four. That's not, I forgot number four. We didn't give out number four. Also, Courtney over here is holding a time card. So while we will not cut off anybody's comment, if you could be mindful of the time and watch Courtney, she'll hold up something saying, please sit around for thirty seconds, and then she'll open saying, please, time is up. Obviously, if you need to speak longer, go ahead, but please be mindful, there are people behind you. Number five, please.
Hi. My name is Maurice Walter, and I'm a member of Massachusetts Senior Action Council, and I would like to surprise somebody with the answer to the ride. My wife and I live at Brooksfield Village in Peabody, and my wife has been using the ride since 2007. And up until June 30th, 2012, we've been able to go directly from Brooksfield Village to Lady Clinic in Burlington, from, from Brooksfield Village itself. Starting from my purse, not only did it price walk for dollars, but we could no longer go directly to Burlington and Lady Campus from Brooksfield Village. Instead, we had to transfer to the city of Orleans, get on another bus, and then go up to Lady Clinic. So what used to be a thirty to forty-five minute trip is now a two-hour trip. And for somebody in a wheelchair, that has been tolerated. So we have enforced the transfer to other doctors, Lady Clinic in Peabody, we don't know. And that's why I'm protesting. I think that the system should be serving the people who need the services, not the convenience of a bus, companies that offer the services. So we could be able to reach the hospital and appoint Peabody without having to train. And I believe I copy of my idea to Europe, further review.
Thank you very much, Jeffrey. Thank you. Number six, please.
Hi, I'm Kim Edwards, and I live here in Lin, and I work for the Mass Senior Action Council. I don't know how many of you were here the last time that the folks came to Lin, but we were in the big auditorium, and many people had things to say. Here we are another year, and we're going back, as the gentleman said, have another hearings. The problem that I'm hearing from the public as an organizer here at Lin is that we just don't feel like the Mass O T or the legislators are listening. As a coalition, we gave solutions so that there wouldn't be the huge increase in the ride. It doubled for people with no thought to the folks that are going every day to cancer treatments. That is now, you know, instead of two dollars round trip, it is now four dollars round trip, five days a week. Kidney dialysis, no consideration. It was, you know, without any thought, without any, you know, to listen to our solutions, and it was done automatically. It was done with premeditative. They wanted to cut the amount of people that are on the ride. They got their very first month the number they wanted, and since then, we're below, like seventeen percent have decreased riding the ridership. That is people not going to senior centers. That is people missing doctor's appointments. That is folks becoming a burden in your younger, in your older age, whenever you still want to be independent on other people. And I think that in a state where we're supposed to be progressive, and we're supposed to think of others, and we should be investing in that. If we would create jobs, there would be revenue. If we would make everybody pay their fair share, there would be revenue. And that we should look at trying to make a community instead of all of these cuts and hurting the most vulnerable people.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is James McKenna. I'm the town manager in the town of Winthrop. Thank you for having this forum. I think these forums are very productive, the ones you had last year were very instrumental in finding solutions to the fiscal challenges you faced last year. And so similar this year, I welcome these forums to advance those ideas and to safeguard our transportation system. I talked tonight about the need to fully envelop water transportation into the composite of transportation options for all of our residents of the Commonwealth, particularly the coastal communities. Winthrop has experienced a wonderful transformation using water transportation in reconnecting its waterfront with the waterfront of the city of Boston. I know that a number of communities are exploring the idea of ferry transportation and expanding water transportation in East Boston and in Lin. I encourage and support those ideas. I also am thrilled about the idea of the new Ferry Compact that has brought all of the users of ferry service, those communities who are looking to advance ferry service, together to work in partnership with each other to advance water transportation as a real, not a novel idea, but a very good component and complement to the other transportation services that the Commonwealth is providing. We have gone from four thousand users in our first year, last year, to fourteen thousand users of that service in one year. That's a transformation to our local economy. It's been wonderful to have, to build a whole new economic development concept and strategy around this service. So we want to see this service continued. We want to see the state supporting it. We want to see it encouraged in Lin, and in East Boston, and in other areas, because we think in partnership with those communities, we do better. Because we're not trying to sort of convince people anymore that this is a viable idea. It already has proven for us to be a viable idea, needs to be fully enveloped in a whole suite of transportation options. I have a memorandum in support of this idea, and I'll leave with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Honorable Board today. I'm Ralph W. Sebner, Chairman of the LACC, Linear Chamber Commerce, representing approximately five hundred businesses, approximately thirty thousand employees. We clearly understand the challenges facing our state transportation system with budget gaps, and we understand the consequences. However, the consequences have to be measured in potential economic future successes or failure. Time is against us. Lin is the largest community north of Boston. Our area has grown substantially as compared to many other areas of the state, as shown by the recent redistricting. We're a hub with many secondary roads trying to be used as major conduits. The critical transportation issues for most parts, for most part, have been neglected in our area. Recently, a comprehensive study was done, as was mentioned before, on our Lin economic feasibility by Dr. Barry Bluestone. His northeastern team did an head set analysis. At the very top of their report, they documented the significant and deleterious challenges for our area in transportation, number one. We no longer can have abandoned transportation approaches in pass. We need a comprehensive area-wide transportation reconstruction using all methods available if we're going to move our economy and our people forward. Our linear wide transportation methods are life support, and the prognosis does not look very good without immediate, well-thought-out comprehensive solutions. As you wrangled these transportation budget gaps with limited funds, I can tell you there is no geographic area in this Commonwealth in more need of transportation solutions, nor has, have we been more patient on transportation solutions. And I respectfully ask your Honorable Board to finally address our needs in a comprehensive regional manner. With the potential of gaming coming into our, our area, the problems are going to further grow and grow in a linear scale. Our transportation needs are held consistent and growing and continue to damage our area's economic sustainability. Time is our greatest enemy, and we greatly appreciate this Honorable Board truly making Lin area transportation needs and problems finally a top priority with a comprehensive plan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about our dire transportation issues. Look forward to your solution. Let your vision, our future, include Lin. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, could numbers eleven through sixteen come up? Are you number nine, Jack?
Yes. I'm here, my name is Jack Southside, resident. Before I start, I want to thank you for coming, all you D O T coming, Richard Davey, Senator Dean, all the elected officials with your support and all the various projects. Blue Line is a local priority and has been for decades. I feel that all four plans, such as DMU trains, David Pelletier's coaster corner, need to be visited and brought back up to the board, and maybe we can get some of these ideas faster than that sooner. This time for the Blue Line to Lin to be done sometime soon. We have an opportunity now, especially with the casinos potentially going to Suffolk Downs or Wonderland or Swanson, somewhere on there, the tie on the Blue Line to Lin extension. I feel should be part of the transportation project, part of the casino plan if that were to happen. And also, the ferry increases were very detrimental, I feel, for the Quinell services in North Shore, because all of a sudden, it used to be ten dollars to get in. There's, you know, six seventy-five each way from Lin to Swanson. All of a sudden, that's thirteen or fourteen dollars each way in the, or not each way, but each time you go to Boston back and forth. That's very high, and that shows a way we can roll that and get some proof there. The buses on the North Shore, the last time, they also cut back service to have service to Wonderland. I think we should have some of those lines still going to Boston to be alternated. Some go to Wonderland, but those people take those routes, have the option to go to Boston. Haymarket, because only just a couple routes now that put up Haymarket. It should still be enough, you want to go to Wonderland, great, there'll be buses back, there should be buses to go to Boston. The four thirty-six, which is the route that goes to North Shore Mall, Woodbridge Mall, Central Square, Linnville Street, is a very important route, stops at Union Hospital on Linnville Street. It's great for going from Monday to Friday, Saturday, but on Sundays, there's no service at all. For me, that's a disgrace, and that should be changed. The ferry is a great thing, and I hope that gets done. There needs to be a connection to that with the bus to the train station. Your South Fairline is also very important, it can enhance the whole region. Also, Quinell should be expanded to Springfield, as well as restoring the inland route, which would connect Worcester, Springfield, to Hartford, down to New York, and then the resident Amtrak system. Main Road to the Lin, one A, one oh seven, Linnville Street, one twenty-nine, should be the only priority for enhancement, not great, because those are, we don't have one twenty, it comes towards, we need those to be important routes. Last thing, I am a little bit hesitant, and we should look into the idea of restoring the I ninety-five moment that was abandoned in nineteen seventies as a potential connector from one oh seven to Route One, the road of the Air Bar Movie Theaters, because it would bring access right to Route One, the Lin's largest employment center, GE, and then that would be approved for the city. I want to thank all for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you.
My name is John Lockie. I work with a coalition called Transportation for Massachusetts, which is a diverse coalition of over thirty organizations, and we're working like transportation advocates, like some of the folks you can see here this evening, like the T Riders Union and others, that's bike owners, but also housing, environmental groups, planners, public health, business groups. So transportation touches on a lot of aspects of people's lives, and as we're hearing, especially from some of the Mass Senior Action folks who headed out, but it really impacts great the quality of life for, for many people who are dependent on transportation. And I think when we left the room, the mayor from Beverly had said that he's willing to go around and had this message put out there, and just saw some survey results this morning that, that sounds like people aren't really aware that we are in a real crisis in terms of our transportation. People are replying that the surveys, that they think transportation could be better, but they don't think it's a crisis, and we're hoping that it doesn't take what happened in Minnesota, like a bridge collapse, before we realize that this is a crisis. So in terms of messaging, that needs to get out there stronger. So this isn't just quality of life, but it could end up impacting someone's actual life, like whether it was life or death. So when we're talking about the amount of money that needs to be raised for this, I think people really have to get a grip on the scale of this. If we're talking about the MBTA being eight billion dollars in debt, of an operating deficit around two hundred and forty million dollars for next year, the capital spending shortfall that some people have estimated for over a billion dollars a year, we're talking serious money. So when we start in the legislature, and I'd like to thank Senator McGee for the leadership he's shown, but when they start talking about the money being raised, we can't nickel and dime it here and there, it's going to be some serious cash that has to be raised, and it has to be invested wisely, because nobody wants to be shelling out more money if you don't know that money's really going into something that's going to affect that quality of life. So we don't want to necessarily just see, it's good to hear some of the different projects, and having grown up in Saugus, yeah, Route One is a mess, and that needs to be addressed. But more than a list of projects, we need to have real performance measures that are related to the quality of life that people are talking about. And then this process that we're having now, where people are coming together and saying what their needs are, saying what the issues are, that that needs to happen after we have some sort of solution. We might not get everything we want in this coming legislative session, but this conversation has to keep going so that the confidence that people have in you all to do this work is maintained, and that people feel that they're getting something for the money, that they're forking over for this, so that when you do a next round of this in however many years' time, the vitriol that comes out will be less, because people feel they have a stake in this. And so Transportation for Massachusetts is more than wanting to work with the guys to make sure that happens, and to work with all the folks here as well. So pass around an email list if anyone wants to actually hear more about what we're doing, and to keep informed what's going on in the legislative process. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tom Powers, President of Boston Harbor Island Alliance, a nonprofit group whose sole mission is to promote the public use and awareness that the Boston Harbor Islands National Park do. First, I want to thank all of you for being here, and for doing nineteen of these around the state, particularly the number that we all did in the spring, certainly cornering the market on public awareness and public participation. If you're focused on islands, you know pretty quickly that you don't have much if you don't have a good water transportation system. So I'm here to urge you, when you're talking about a vision or convee you, a vision, the transportation system for Massachusetts, that has ferry transportation, water, water transportation as an integral component of it. My organization works closely with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, one of your sister agencies. Since 2004, we have combined spent more than thirty-five billion dollars upgrading the Boston Harbor Islands and drawing more people there. Public ridership has gone from forty-eight thousand over a summer season that goes May through September, from forty-eight thousand to one hundred and thirty thousand. There's still an enormous amount more that can attract people. There's a huge recreational economic engine potential here, but there's a new visitor center on George's Island, there's new resources on Pettix Island this summer, Spectacle Island, there's a new welcoming center at the Rose Kennedy Greenway to give people more information about the island. If you don't have a good ferry system, you really don't have a complete approach, and you can't get people there effectively. So I urge you, when you're writing the vision for Massachusetts, to include ferry transportation as a key part of it. A couple other points, I know that Lin has planned for a ferry system. I would strongly endorse that. We worked, my organization worked with the town of Winthrop this summer, they got a pilot ferry system to Boston, and we worked with them to use those ferries on the weekends when they were available to take people out to the Harbor Islands. That was very successful, and we look forward to working with Lin and hoping to work on the same kind of thing, getting maximum use of benefit for the citizens of Lin and for the operators of ferries. Massport has not been mentioned, and they are a key part of the, in my mind, transportation system, the economic potential of the harbor. I would urge them to be a key part of your transportation vision. They are one of the entities that co-manages the Harbor Islands, is responsible for coordinating the Harbor Islands. And finally, I want to mention that the flyer that you use for your announcing this hearing tonight, it's a great flyer, but it doesn't have the logo or symbol of a ferry or a boat, and I urge you to include that in future flyers and also your thinking. And I guess finally echoing the comments of the gentleman before me, we recognize the challenge facing you in developing a plan for the legislature, and we recognize that you can be efficient and do more with us for a while, but at some point, you've got to have more revenues, and we strongly endorse the need for an effective water, overall transportation system that does, I recognize, require more revenues. Thank you very much for the chance to discuss.
Thank you. We asked for relocation for me, in case people weren't being able to see her. So Courtney will hold up the thirty-second sign and the time's up sign, but we will not obviously take the mic from anybody, so please bear that in mind. You are number twelve, Jack, correct?
I'm here, I'm from Lin, and some folks on the needs of Lin. What hasn't been emphasized is that Lin is an immigrant community. We have ninety, over ninety thousand people here, more people than Revere and Salem combined. Many of the people do not have cars or other means of transportation, so do rely on a good system of getting in and out of Boston for jobs. Many of us cannot afford to go by the community rail, and I'm sure won't be able to afford the ferry either, and that comes, plus the schedules are not conducive to people that are on schedules, meaning that you have to go to Wonderland, which is a half hour ride just to get to Wonderland, to get to a train. But I want to read that Lin already has half the money needed for the Blue Line. Copying from Congressman Tierney, the website, just want to read a paragraph that we already have half the money, we just need to match. Congressman Tierney has worked diligently to secure federal funding for extending the Blue Line to Lin. He along with Senators Kennedy, DeChambeau, and Christos, and Kerry, sent federal funds to first explore and determine the best improvements for the North Shore corridor area, and then to contribute partial construction funding. He's proud to help secure a fifty million authorization. It's the first such federal commitment in a more than thirty-year quest in the Transportation Equity Act of the twenty-first century, which was approved in a hundred and fifth Congress. It's from Tierney's website. Every time I ask, the money's still there, you just have to match it, and we can have the Blue Line, so we're already halfway there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If you heard me, and if you're experiencing that for my health, that would be great.
Thank you. My name is Pam Payne from Peabody. Parents enjoy the litteration, obviously. Parents enjoy the literation, obviously. The only organization I'm going to be representing here is me and I'm just here, I hadn't actually even planned to speak until I got here and was listening to some of the people. Peabody, from Peabody to Wonderland in Revere, it's a really difficult drive. It's incredibly difficult, which is why normally when I go into Boston, I get on the commuter rail from Salem, but the increase in the fare has just gotten so out of hand and frankly, I'd rather walk than to ride into Boston, so I'd rather walk into Boston. But I really, I really implore you to bring the Blue Line at least to Lynn. I would ask that it be extended to Salem, there was talk some time ago about bringing it to Peabody, actually, to a start, to a start in Peabody, and I would love that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, what number are you, ma'am? Okay, so you're 20 or 21 or 22?
I'm 20 right here.
21, 22, or here?
Let me just reframe my shot.
13, 21. 21? All right, thank you.
I like the lucky winner. Are you 20? Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick.
Thank you.
I'll be quick. So my name is Price Armstrong. I, well, I work for Mass Bike, I guess I'm representing Mass Bike, Massachusetts Bicycle Coalition. And, well, first, I just want to thank Mast Dot and Secretary Davie, who still approve for their leadership on really wanting to make Mast Dot a multimodal transportation department, especially with the recently announced mode shift goals. It's very exciting, wanting to triple biking, walking, and transit by, I believe it was 2030. To that end, though, one thing that I'm realizing as I learn more and more about the transportation planning process is that it takes a really long time. So it might take 15 or 20 years to get a rail trail built and, you know, rail trails are relatively simple. So there are a lot of transportation projects that were planned in, say, the 1990s even, that may not align with our current transportation vision, which is what we're talking about, our vision and our future, where we want to go. So what I want to really encourage Mast Dot to do is to try and create some threshold, maybe the 75% design phase, below which you reconsider, do these transportation projects line up with where we want to go? Where we wanted to go in 1992 may not be the same place we want to go in 2012 and there are still transportation projects that are in the pipeline and I would really, really hate to see some massive 128 interchange being built that is serving motorists and increasing traffic volumes, increasing emissions, increasing reliance on foreign oil, when it doesn't align with, Green Dot, it doesn't align with our mode shift vision. And so, creating that sort of threshold to just say, okay, we're going to reconsider these, I think would be an excellent step forward, and since I'm a bike advocate, I'm sure it would benefit biking, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, my name is Seth Albaugh. I'm speaking for both the Downtown Lynn Neighborhood Association and as a resident in a transit-oriented neighborhood, so to speak. That is the passion, isn't it, or has been for the past few years, to develop mixed-use housing around public transportation and that's what we have here in Downtown Lynn with bus service and commuter rail service. I can walk outside my building, cross the street, and take the stairs up to the commuter rail platform. I can then take that train, just a few stops into Chelsea, and walk a couple of blocks to work, but I don't, for a few reasons. But the biggest reason is that it's still unfortunately cheaper for me to drive. Perhaps if I went all the way to Boston and had to worry more about parking, it would make more sense. But then there are the weekends. I'd like to go in town, walk around, do a few things in Boston, see a band, see a show. I look at the commuter rail schedule, it's not going to happen, I have to drive. So again, I'm clogging up the roads instead of taking mass transit. I suppose I could take the Blue Line, but I'm already in my car. When I moved to Lynn, I was not promised the Blue Line. I knew that it was a fight, a 50-year-old fight, 100-year-old fight, I heard for the first time tonight. But I think that it still needs to be fought for. 90,000 people, that's a pretty big satellite city and it needs a better connection to Boston. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Drake. I'm a Beverly resident and I'd just like to echo the gentleman said before me and I support the Blue Line extension to Lynn. Yeah, I really like what he was saying about the affordability issue, you guys have heard that many times, I'm sure you've heard it eight times already, so it's probably beating the drum there, but that's just it. You guys have an incredible, amazing project out there and you'd be committed for that for helping to build roads and everything like that. I just want to put forth, again, the issue of affordability. What good is it to have and to build all this stuff if we can't afford to use this stuff? And I would implore you that you use just the power that you have and the relationships that you have in government to put forth a project of affordability. That is something that we sorely need. And I'd just like to point out that sometimes the reasoning, the moral reasoning, the ethical reasoning gets locked up in sort of movies or bootstraps and all this kind of thing. And I think that's a little old. I think we need, I think the discussion is on the benefits of mass transit. Have long been with us for at least a century now. The more we learn about, obviously, environmental issues, not the least of all, which is climate change, global warming, oh my gosh, hurricane, Sandy, you know, I mean, I grew up and this was a major issue and I thought by now it wouldn't be much further along than we are. But if we have affordability being the barrier as to why we can't get more people using transportation more efficiently, that doesn't emit carbon and other toxins that have direct effects on our physiology and our respiratory systems, that's just totally unnecessary. That's basically a subsidy of public health and public well-being so that we can have slightly cheaper car transit, that's just not rational and it's not healthy. It's not helpful for me, it's not helpful for my friends and their children or my age. And I think we definitely have the capacity to come up, find a way to keep things going. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Chris, I'm a student from North Shore Community College. I'm here to ask, and I start to plead, extend any form of transportation to our next campus, which is in Denver. The reason why most of the students drop out because transportation, because they're like, oh, I don't have a, you know, to go to the next campus and I don't have anyone to be a backup because the shuttle bus is not, we don't have like two, three shuttle buses, we only have one and it takes time in between and students always get to wait and they're like, oh, okay, then if anything happens, I have to shuttle class because most of the classes are in Denver. So we are asking, please, Chris, we are asking from ourselves, please extend the public transportation to Denver. Any form of transportation, the road is already there, just tell the driver, oh yes, continue the, you know, the road. So, we are asking from the North Shore Community College. And also, I'm waiting back in Peabody, I'm asking for you guys to please extend our transportation, the public transportation, we have the roads, just especially on Lower Street, we have just one bus, a run on Lower Street. Please, we are asking for public transportation in Peabody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again for coming here tonight. I'm Stefan Wuch, I'm Lynn resident, also a member of the MBTA's Rider Recite Committee, but I'm not speaking on their behalf, speaking just for myself tonight. I live in a street in Lynn that in 1888 was the first electrified trolley in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Lynn is also known as being the city of firsts for a number of different reasons. I want to suggest and just put the thought on everyone's head tonight that the Lynn and Revere area with the Blue Line could be the first significant partnership, as Mayor Costum had suggested earlier, a public-private partnership for the advancement of the Blue Line to Lynn and who knows even further. I think with the craft organization eyeing the former Wonderland area as a potential 20,000-seat stadium for soccer, the potential for improving the roads in the 1A, 107, 16 area, plus the Blue Line, plus goodness knows even the commuter rail stop at Wonderland have the biggest potential for coming to fruition that they have in 35, 40, 50 years. Besides the possibility of a public-private partnership there with the craft organization to see the Blue Line and other things improved, I'd also like to suggest that as much as I would like to see Fall River and Bedford have commuter rail service, I strongly feel that it's a bigger bang for the buck per capita, per dollar spent to have the Blue Line extended and particularly with regards to what the previous speaker was saying, the operational costs long-term, I think, would be far lower for the Blue Line extension. And of course, we know that the operational costs are really what eats into DOT budget for long-term. So as much as I don't, aside, I don't want to have an us versus them, Fall River, New Bedford commuter rail versus Blue Line to Lynn, I really think that environmentally and per capita, the Blue Line extension is just a far better option. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. I would like to thank everybody for staying on time. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. My name's Nick Fiore. I'm the transportation advocate for Mass Perd and we're also a part of what John Walkie was describing earlier, it's a broad coalition known as T for Mass, Transportation for Massachusetts, articulating, you know, future with smart, sustainable investments in our transportation system. And certainly, you know, to start off with and remind ourselves of this problem that we have of billions of dollars in debt, our transportation system not only needs investments that will get us out of our current hole that we've dug ourselves, but also maintain its status quo and then go beyond and invest in a future transportation system that actually recognizes some of the principles of problems that we're facing in the 21st century, notably economic inequality rising, notably climate change and global warming, and in particular as we move forward, actually addressing tangible goals outlined in the Global Warming Solutions Act would be something that we would certainly advocate for, as well as looking at our future, in particular with, you know, baby boomers only getting older and more and more students graduating from our colleges and universities, investing in students and seniors in particular. And, you know, recent data shows that students and seniors are relying on our transportation systems, particularly public transportation, and actually are demanding increases in public transportation use options more than any other age demographics. And we need to respond to that with systems that mirror those needs. And, you know, we could go on and on with stories and we've heard a few tonight and there've been students in the room tonight from local colleges and universities, but actually making sure that these discussions reach students and seniors beyond the advocacy community and make sure that we continue these discussions as we move forward and make sure that they're future-oriented and that not only are we addressing particular projects that a lot of people were mentioning, but addressing a universal vision for transportation that includes all of these demographics, particularly the most vulnerable and marginalized of all of our communities. So, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.